Okay, well, I tell you what.
We're ready whenever you guys are.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 10th. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the board chair this year. On my left, we have fellow commissioners Bill Avery and Deb Shore. On my right, fellow commissioners Roma Amundson and the vice chair Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us this morning from the county attorney's office is Jen Holloway. From the county clerk's office, we have the chief deputy Cory Beatty and Monica McCollum from the...
Monet.
Monet, sorry.
It's okay.
Did I say Monica? Apologize. Monet McCollum. From the county attorney, the county board office, we have Carrie Egan, the chief administrative officer, and Ann Ames, the deputy chief administrative officer. Now, if you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Beatty, could you please start the agenda?
Sure. Before we start, I'd like to announce that a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Any discussion or correction? Please hold a roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item two is approval of all claims processed through July 10th, 2018. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Hearing none, please hold a roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item number three is a special presentation. We have recognition of the services performed by Hunter Charrington for the Lancaster County Records and Information Management Department through the work and gain experience in the summer program of the Nebraska Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired. We have Brian Pillard, Records and Information Manager, and Shane Burish, Nebraska Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired.
Good morning.
I'm Brian Pillard with Records and Information Management. I think a few weeks ago, you had on your agenda the contract with the county and Nebraska Commission, and I just wanted to bring that to you to show you what exactly that translates into and, but you know, the value of the contract that we've had for, I think it's been over fifteen years where the county is partnering with the Commission for Blind and Visually Impaired, and we get a student from the program every summer who comes and does work for us. Hunter is here this year, he was also here last year. He does scanning of documents for district court in the morning, then he's shredding documents. Every afternoon, he's working eight-hour day, Monday through Friday. So, I'd like to introduce Shane Burish from the Commission to tell you more about the specific program.
Thank you, Brian. My microphone is right here on, right now. All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, the wages program, it stands for work and gain experience in the summer, and I believe we're in our twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth year of the program, and it was created to try and reverse a fairly disturbing trend of unemployment or underemployment for disabled individuals, particularly blind individuals in society. So, most people, these days, you know, the economy's going really well, and there's hardly any unemployment, and so that really usually does benefit us because people are looking for more and more workers. But people are usually often shocked to find out that there's about a seventy percent unemployment or underemployment rate for individual disabilities. And, of course, we all get our first experiences in employment in our teenage years. What happens to us, though, as blind individuals, is there's a lot of myths and misconceptions in society about what we might be able to do. So, you know, if we approach your home as a teenager to scoop your driveway or mow the lawn, you probably might think, "Well, I don't know exactly how they're going to do that safely," or, you know, "How do they know where I have my, you know, favorite plans," or whatever the case may be. So, we created this program, as I said, about twenty-five years ago to give blind and visually impaired individuals from across Nebraska the chance to do some of those early emergent jobs and to begin building a resume since, in their communities, it was often hard to find those starter jobs. And what's really cool about the program is that individuals like yourselves as the county and state and other nonprofits, we sometimes go into commercial businesses, but giving the opportunity, many of the jobs actually go beyond what you might have all started out as or we think of as those first teenage jobs. And so, it's really cool because it's actually even closer to what an individual might want to do as their career often. Now, some of them sometimes tell me, you know, "I thought I wanted to do landscaping, and it's ninety-five every day, and I may not want to do that." And then that's a motivator for them to maybe pursue some higher ed degrees or things that they hadn't originally thought. But that's what those first jobs are about too, isn't it? Like, what we may not want to do the rest of our lives. So, that's just important. And so, we just really thank you all for, whether directly or indirectly, and Brian and the staff at Records and Information Management for, you know, stepping up and really helping to, our students to grow through what we call the, in the rehabilitation and education world, the transition process. Because the students are staying at the UNL campus at Ny Hart Hall, and they're learning how to use the bus system. Hunter travels on the bus every day independently and worked up to that this summer, and they're... So, they're getting around town. We had a group of students go independently out to Walmart last night, I know, and they're learning what it's like to first live in college life and going to the cafeteria and doing their laundry and all those beginning things that really helped give them probably a leg up on their non-disabled counterparts. So, we appreciate the recognition of our program, but it really takes individuals like Brian and the staff at Records and Information Management, and Hunter does have what's called a job readiness trainer with him. Lydia Cotton, who, she is there to, you know, help give him any guidance or anything of that nature, kind of like an onsite supervisor. And so, there's lots of pieces, as you can see, to make it all go. And Hunter, of course, is the star of the show. He's really independent this summer, and so, again, we thank you for the opportunity. And if anyone, you know, listening to this or any other county agencies, we're always looking for, to expand the variety and new kinds of opportunities for our students. So, I'm sure, I don't want to put words in Brian's mouth, but I'm sure he would talk to you about the success we've had over the years if you had any concerns about it, but I'm certainly available too if anyone would want to partner with us in the future too. So, we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burish.
And I could entertain any questions if you had any too.
Any questions for Mr. Burish?
I just wanted to add a comment as well as...
Come on up and introduce yourself and...
Sure.
Yeah, either microphone.
Hi there. Wayne Shabber. And I've been a public schools employee, worked for LPS for sixteen years or so. Don't want to totally give away my age, but most recently in a vocational practice program called The Voice Program, but before that at North Star High School and at Northeast High School. And having seen kids before my involvement in wages who have been involved over the summer and then come back, and the change that I've seen in them is just phenomenal. I had a kid out at North Star High School who, you know, was very much younger than his peers, the way he acted, the way he just held himself, the, um, his ability to take on assignments and complete things independently and get around the school on his own, and how that changed after having been a part of the wages program where he learned that I can do a job, I can get a paycheck, and I can do the bus system on my own, just within a matter of months after being a participant in the wages program, just how it totally pumped him up about himself and his own abilities and gave him that feeling that, you know, "I can do this on my own, I don't need your help." Or, "I'll get started on it, and then I'll ask you what I need to do or how to finish it." So, it is just a phenomenal practice program for these students.
All right. Thank you for sharing that information. Commissioner Brinkman has a question.
Mr. Burish, can you tell us, how long is the program each summer and how are students able to... Is it an application process, or how is that determined, who gets to participate?
Sure. The program ranges from five to six years generally. So, this year, we started on June 3rd and are going through this Friday. Individuals, I don't know how much you're familiar with what's called vocational rehabilitation, but in Nebraska, we receive federal funds to assist disabled individuals with learning skills or providing equipment or the kinds of resource they need to become employed so that they become taxpayers as opposed to being on the system. And so, in Nebraska, we actually have two agencies, one that's called Nebraska VR, which handles all varieties of disabilities, and then I am from the Nebraska Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired, which receives the same funding to work with Nebraskans who are blind or visually impaired. And I stepped through all of that to say that I'm an individual who would need to be one of our participants and approach us. And so, there's an application process there, but then, yes, individuals are eligible from the age of sixteen on through the senior year, or, well, after their senior year of high school. In some cases, they may not graduate. There are provisions out in public school where they can go through the age of twenty-one in school, so sometimes we do have, you know, older individuals too. But if a person were interested, they would just need to reach out to us at the Nebraska Commission for the Blind, and then about February, we roll out the application process. And about in that same time window, I started approaching a pla... Actually, I think I called employers in December this year, but, so somewhere in the late fall, winter, we'll start that whole process, so...
Thank you.
And then, how many participants do you usually have?
Um, we've had as many as nineteen to twenty in the past. This year, we had twelve. So, that would be the range. We haven't ever dipped much below that.
Okay.
Some are Lincoln Lancaster County-based. I think they should, we have one or two, but they do, they are statewide.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there anything Hunter would like to add to the discussion? Appreciate hearing from you. I don't know what to say. Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming and sharing your story, and we very much appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Moving on to new business, item four A is a resolution in the matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County, whichever remain unclaimed for six months or more.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding the witness fees that have gone unclaimed for six months. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four B is a resolution in the matter of the emergency closure of Bridge E-117.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. As we talked last week, but didn't have a chance to get on the agenda, is Bridge E-117 located on Northwest Eighty-Four Street between West Bluff and West Waverly Road. It is a simple thirty-foot spanned bridge cast in place, concrete deck on a WPA spread footing. You've heard a lot about these bridges. This particular bridge has seventy-two cars a day on it, and, you know, based on our scour critical plan of action inspection, it no longer meets the criteria to be open. We are fortunate with this bridge. It was damaged in the 2015 flooding, and it is part of the reconstruction cost of this bridge is a FEMA reimbursement. This bridge has already been designed and bid, and we do expect to start construction on it as soon as we can get the Army Corps of Engineers permit and we can get out of bat pup season.
Thank you for that information. Ms. Dingman, any questions?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second regarding the emergency closure of Bridge E-117. Any additional discussion? Please hold a roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four C is a contract with JJK Construction LLC on behalf of the Lancaster County engineer for scour repair at Bridge H-119. The cost to the county is $334,496.28. Work is to be completed on or before August 1st, 2018.
Bridge H-119 is a bridge that we had previously awarded to another contractor. This is the re-award to the second low bidder. This is a nineteen-eighties bridge. We have a number of these that they were designed a little too short. And so, in order to shore up this bridge, we've designed abutment walls at all four corners to get that thing locked back in place. It is, it is a scour susceptible bridge. It is located on 176th Street, just north of Bluff Road, and we are also hoping to start construction on this as soon as bat pup season is over.
Can you remind us when that season ends?
Sure. So, anytime we have an Army Corps of Engineers permit or three, or trees that are larger than three inches in diameter, there, we are not allowed to cut trees unless we can prove that they are bat-free between the time period of June 1 and July 30.
Commissioner Brinkman?
So, according to the agenda, work is to be completed on or before August 1st. How is that possible?
Well, this is the awarding of the contract. Unfortunately, the way the procedure goes, we have to award the contract before putting in the change order, so we are going to have to do a change order to this contract, obviously, to extend the completion date.
So, we might think about awarding our agendas a little differently in that if the public's looking at this agenda, this is not accurate in any way.
Right, but I would have to consult the county attorney's office for how we change a contract before we've awarded it technically.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Dingman?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the contract to JJ Construction for the bridge repair H-119. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four D is a change order to county contract C-18-0261 with Yost Excavating Inc. for a value engineering study to use steel head wall in place of concrete head walls. Cost savings in material costs and a reduction in number of days. The road is closed thereby reducing sign and barricade costs by a minimum of three days per site for Project 18-05 for a decrease of $10,668.63.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. So, all of our specs, when we put them out to bid, have a clause in them for value engineering. And on occasion, in my engineering career, I have had contractors say things to me like, "I don't have an engineering license, but if I was designing this project, I would've X." And usually, I know when that happens that I'm about ready to be schooled in something. And so, I, as an engineer, we do coordinate with construction companies, and on occasion, they do present something to us that is a cost savings to the taxpayer. So, in this case, for this contract, not all of the pipes that are on the contracts are good candidates for replacement with metal, metal head walls, but the ones shown on the exhibit are, and so, we will be changing those out with metal head walls in order to get, in order to save the taxpayers' money and get the roads open sooner.
Any questions for Ms. Dingman?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the change orders with Yost Excavating. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four E is an agreement with Kissel Coho ES Associates LLC for legislative services. The term of the agreement is November 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2020. The county will pay $63,000 for each year of the agreement.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Kissel Coho and ES Associates. Any discussion? Commissioner Shore?
I will be abstaining on this item as I have nearly, well, every year that this agreement has been in place. ES Associates, there's a business relationship between Erickson and Cedarstrom, a law firm at which my husband is managing partner.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
I think we ought to point out to the public that this contract that's proposed here is not, does not represent an increase in the compensation to this firm over last year, which is odd in the lobbying world, would you say?
I'll take it when we can get it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, please hold a roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Abstain.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Four F is a cooperative service agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services, for assistance in facilitating wildlife damage management. Per contract C-18-0263, the county will pay up to $7,500 per year for the services. The agreement is effective upon final signature and shall continue for five years.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the cooperative services agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four G is an interlocal agreement among Butler County, Cass County, Colfax County, Dodge County, Douglas County, Lancaster County, Platt County, Sarpy County, Saunders County, and Seward County to create the lower Platt weed management area to address noxious and invasive plant problems in the lower Platt River drainage area.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement creating the lower Platt weed management area. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four H is a contract with New Heights Tree Service for unit price tree trimming and removal services. The contract term is from July 20th, 2018 through July 19th, 2019. The cost to the county shall not exceed $15,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with New Heights Tree Service. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four I is an agreement with Lincoln Orthopedic for specialized medical care and assistance to general assistance clients. The provider will be reimbursed at the Medicaid rate. The agreement is effective upon execution and shall continue for five years.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Lincoln Orthopedic. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four J is a grant contract and addendum with the Human Services Federation in the amount of $3,425 for the Youth Thrive Trainings Program. The contract is funded by the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Community-Based Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. Term of the grant contract is May 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract and addendum with the Human Services Federation for the Youth Thrive Trainings Program. Any discussion? I guess I would just ask, do we know why the addendum was approved, May 1st through June 30th? I'm sure there's a reason for it. Ms. Hoyle?
The case management training occurred in early June, and so, the contract just needed to be for that length of time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four K is a grant contract with the People's City Mission, the amount of $252,000 for housing, community resource allocation, and coordination at the People's City Mission's Curtis Center for Sentence Conversion Program participants. Term of the grant contract is June 1st, 2018 through October 1st, 2020.
Kim Ethererton, Community Corrections, good morning. I am here to answer any questions that you might have about this contract.
I think this is an excellent program and an example of what we've done in the Justice Council to address the crowding in the county jail. Can you give us just a brief summary of this program and what the terms of the contract are?
Absolutely. This contract is being used for a new program that we're working on with the District Court for sentence conversion, which means that, and it's specifically targeting eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds. We know that eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds are reincarcerated at a very high rate, as a matter of fact, the highest rate among age groups. So, our efforts are being directed towards that age group in hopes that we can reduce the rebooking rate of those, of those individuals. The program will, we will be looking at individuals who are eligible based on their age, based on their offenses, what they're being sentenced for. They must be sentenced for at least, at least six, six, six months to a year for us to have enough time to work with them. When they are approved for the program by the sentencing judge, then they will spend as little time as they can incarcerated, if any, if necessary, at the most four to six weeks where we will start programming with them inside the county jail. Most, probably, most likely, probably, the substance abuse, we'll start substance abuse treatment if it's necessary for them inside the county jail. We will bring them out and supervise them electronically, monitor them, and most of them will be placed at the People's City Mission Curtis Center where they will have wraparound services available to them at the Curtis Center. So, specifically, there's housing assistance. Our goal is to get them, to move them from the Curtis Center into independent living. There's job assistance at the Curtis Center. They will be allowed to work, actually, at the People's City Mission to establish a work history, and then we will be working with them for stable employment once they're released from the program. Our hope is that they're housed and that they're employed. Also have GED options available for them at the Curtis Center, and we'll have, one of the things that's really nice about working with the People's City Mission is their help center that they have out on East O Street now where individuals can go basically and gather things that they need for, for a home that they may, and there's no cost associated with that. So, if they need bedding or a lamp or... with that. So, if they need bedding, or a lamp, or shelving unit, or whatever, they can find at the Help Center that they can use in an apartment that they may be moving into. So, the goal then is also to get them through substance abuse treatment if needed, get them connected to mental health services as needed, and hopefully, put them in a better position, being less likely to reoffend. We have a great researcher on board, as you know, that's going to be collecting the data, and we're going to be looking at recidivism data through the course of the next five years.
That's a great point. I was going to ask if there was, that this was included in the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant that we were awarded.
Yeah, this is the main, the main part of the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant.
Commissioner Shore has a question.
Can you give us an estimate of the cost per day at the Curtis Center, and then a cost per day for monitoring maybe on a bracelet in a different environment, just to give an idea? We know it's about $98, $105 per day in the county jail.
The Curtis Center is currently giving us a really great rate of $50 a day. In my department, if we have somebody on just general electronic monitoring, pretrial release or house arrest, it runs us about $15 to $20 a day, so.
It's a significant cost savings.
Absolutely. The grant, you know, the nice thing about having the grant for this program is we can see, you know, if it's working and if it's worth investing in in the future.
Any other questions? Commissioner Brinkman?
So, when you say, "We are going to work with these individuals," is that your staff? Is it People's City Mission staff? How does that break down? What's their responsibility? What's your responsibility?
Well, the People's City Mission will be responsible for making certain that housing is available. There's, they have all their meals provided for them there. They have laundry facilities available. They have, again, the programming available. My staff will be, first of all, providing intervention. A lot of the folks who don't require inpatient treatment will be coming into our matrix model program that we have, that we currently have in the department. So, they'll be participating in that and participating in mental health services. Again, part of being involved in matrix treatment is individual therapy, and the other thing that we will be doing is addressing any kind of their trauma history that we have. The previous grant that we had through BJA and SAMSA allowed us to do a lot of training for trauma intervention, and so my staff are very well-prepared to work with those issues as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Ethererton? Okay, I think I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the People's City Mission. Any discussion? Any additional discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ms. PD, would you please call the roll?
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4L is a grant contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center in the amount of $4,225 for the New Americans Task Force Program. The contract is funded by the Grants Fund for the period of May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center for the New Americans Task Force Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4M are grant contracts funded by the Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, with the following: Boys and Girls Clubs of Lincoln, Lancaster County, in the amount of $27,900 for the Teen Outreach Program, and the Mediation Center in the amount of $55,285 for the Restorative Justice Practices Program.
Good morning. Sarah with Lincoln, Lancaster, Human Services, and today we have, yes, sorry, with the Mediation Center to talk about the program that we contract with them for under this, which is Restore, and providing mediation services for youth in that program.
Good morning. I'm Claire Nelson, and I'm the coordinator for the Project Restore at the Mediation Center, and it is a collaboration with our center, the Lincoln Public Schools, the Lancaster County Attorney's Office, the Lincoln Police Department, and of course, the Department of Human Services. Basically, the concept is to give youth a second chance, what happens, and to move quickly with it. They, this is an incidence that usually happen at school, or do happen at school with Project Restore. They, it's oftentimes an assault or disturbing the peace, or possibly property damage. They, it's where a citation is cited. So, the youth is then, it goes to the county attorney's office. They make the decision if it's going to come to us, and then we start the process within five and hope to get it done within five to 10 days. That's kind of tough sometimes, and they've been very cooperative with us that sometimes it's hard to get a hold of parents and kids. The process basically is, it's a four-component process, and usually takes about, it takes at least two meetings. And the ideal situation with a Project Restore case is if we can bring all of the people that were involved in the incident. Usually, we're talking two youth, and their families often, and support people are brought in. We meet with each one of them individually first. There's four components to this. The story, which of course, they all have their own truth, and so, we provide them a safe and neutral space to talk about that, and we provide a constructive communication dialogue that happens. So, the story, and then the next step of that is to find out, well, who was affected by this? And not only who was affected by what happened, how were they affected? And then the final part and piece of this is, how are you going to repair the harm? And it's not us telling them, but how are you going to, you know, what can you do to repair this? And the thing that's very important is, because there's more than one person oftentimes, family members, teachers are affected, other students are affected, and so there are different pairs for, there's different consequences. Obviously, there's different effects that happen. So, it's turned back into the youth, and oftentimes, we're talking apologies. Now, I will tell you, we meet with, we try always to meet with both kids that are involved. I don't like to use the word victim offender, but that's what it's referred to. We can't always make that happen, and so when we can't have the, oftentimes, the victim in the room, we have trained youth, that we've trained to come in and sit in on that dialogue, not to sit in place of the victim, but to sit in place of the community. And we found in the beginning, we weren't using youth, and now that we've trained them, it really bridges with these kids' communication skills, because we have the youth in the room that are able to give some perspective from their point. Once the process is done, then we report back to the county. I will give you the numbers for last year. We had 72 cases that were referred, and I want you to understand that these are kids that are 16 and under. So, we're working with both middle school and high school kids, but they are under the age of 16. 72 cases were referred. We had 70 of them completed by June 30th, which is the end of our year. We completed one after on July 3rd, and we did have one case that we had to return, but we felt that was pretty good statistics. There were 31 female participants and 41 male participants. I have some, we have not been able to compile the statistics for this last year in the way that we were able for last year, but I can just give you a little bit of information, as, actually, we had four, from, this is, these are statistics from 2015, when it started, to 17. 94% were completed with reparations agreements. 98% of those reparation agreements were successfully fulfilled by the youth, and two were still in progress, and four out of five of the youth who participated in the Victim Youth Conference scene did not have a second defense sent to the court within a year. And so, that's our goal. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Nelson? Commissioner Amundson?
I really don't have a question, but I just simply want to say that I think that this is really a fantastic program. It's an innovative one. It's something that has been coming across the nation, and it shows that, and your results do show that it is very, very effective. The whole, and goal is to keep people, the young people, out of the legal system, so really do thank you for your efforts in this regard.
Well, thank you. It's been a great, it's just a great place to be, and it's pretty amazing when you watch kids grow through the process, and what's even more amazing is when you watch parents, parents sit and watch their children grow, and they see good communication modeled, and it's, I agree with you. Thank you.
And having been a teacher, you know, quite a few years ago, you know, back in the 60s, back in the 70s and 80s, we did not have that particular type of program, and so youth were dealt with a little bit differently. So, this is really a very positive thing.
Thank you. I have brochures and our statistics. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contracts funded by the Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item 4N are grant contracts funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, with the following: Cedar's Youth Services, in the amount of $295,858 for the Emergency Shelter and Crisis Stabilization Programs; Asian Community and Cultural Center in the amount of $10,000 for the Family Resource Program; and Voices of Hope in the amount of $6,750 for the Crisis Intervention and Advocacy Program.
Okay, and for the Joint Budget Committee, grant applications, grant awards, we have Mekan here with Cedar's, and then Sheila with the Asian Community and Cultural Center, and Marcy is here from Voices of Hope.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Mekan Lee Svaldva Cedars, and I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank you all for your consideration of continued support of Cedar's Emergency Shelter. I know that some of you have even been out to visit and are well-aware that Cedar's Pioneer's Emergency Shelter remains the only emergency shelter available for unaccompanied youth in all of Southeast Nebraska. So, really filling an important role in our community, and one of the things that I wanted to point out in particular, specific to this grant contract, is a safety, is a safety measure that we have really taken over the last couple of years. And when I refer to safety, keeping kids safe while they're in our care has always been number one priority of Cedar's, but ensuring that they always feel safe is yet another step that we have really been working hard over the years to ensure that we can layer into our services. And a component of this grant contract is the provision of a licensed mental health therapist available to any and all children who come into our care. At the Pioneer Center, should they need it or should they desire to work with a licensed mental health therapist? And it is probably no surprise to you all that a lot of the young people who come to us have experienced some trauma, or are at a kind of crisis point in their life. And having added that additional layer of crisis stabilization and mental health support has really changed the tenor of how we're providing emergency shelter. So, I wanted to point that out in particular and say thank you for that additional provision. Not only are we seeing kids stabilize more quickly, we're seeing them move along to more permanent placements more successfully with the addition of that support. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the emergency shelter or about that particular layer of services.
Commissioner Shore?
I guess I'm just interested in the vacancy rate, how often you're full. Yeah, summer's a busy time, but.
Summer is a busy time. We have been running really quite full, so 16 is our capacity. We do kind of a point in time every Monday, because things change throughout the week. Kids might be here in the morning, they may leave by the evening. 14 to 16 is about where we've been all summer long. And we'll anticipate serving about 160 kids in the coming year, but summer is a busy time for us, and we are, we are monitoring that really carefully, because we have been running up against that 16 capacity quite a little bit in the last six months.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Avery?
How many people in the community you think need this program? Because if you're doing 14 to 16, I doubt if there's any old people who need it.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. I don't know that I could wager a guess as to how many need it, but we do know, you know, when we work with young people, they may be coming to us through the Department of Health and Human Services, through juvenile probation, or from just private families in the community who need a little bit of respite, and these are short-term stays. They're 30 days or less ideally. So, we, so we are able to kind of get a little bit of an idea of what the waitlist would look like when we do sort of pop up, but certainly, the more that we communicate with our community at large about the availability of this service, I think we would find that we are not meeting the need in its entirety, probably particularly for those youth who are still in their family homes, but the families could use some additional support.
So, you mentioned a waitlist. Can you kind of elaborate on that?
Yes, we try really hard not to have a waitlist. And so, what we do when we have, when our, for instance, if we do have a capacity of 16 in our emergency shelter at any given time, and somebody gives us a call and needs some support, if it is a private family in the community, we have a myriad of ways that we can start to work with that family that perhaps does not necessitate an out-of-home stay, or perhaps we can find a respite foster family that might be able to provide that very short-term, brief out-of-stay component, but we'll go in and start working with the family immediately in the home. We don't often run up against a waitlist, and when we do, because of the discharges of kids, which sometimes we can, we can look to see, you know, maybe it's just a two-day wait or something like that until we discharge another young person.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, and.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service that you provide to our community.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sheila Dorsey Vinton from the Asian Community and Cultural Center to talk about our Family Resource Program recently funded by the Joint Budget Committee. Our Family Resource Program serves all immigrants and refugees in Lincoln, Lancaster County. Primarily, we serve people from Vietnam, Burma, Myanmar, people who are Yazidi, ethno-religious group, people from North Africa and other Middle Eastern countries, and, but our staff are able to serve any other people that come in that we can. We, with our Family Resource Program, it's one of our largest programs out of six programs that we offer at the center, and almost every person that comes to the center needs some assistance with the Family Resource Program. The Family Resource Program provides language assistance, because the people who come to us have a language barrier to accessing services that are available to them, that they're eligible for. So, it could be as simple as connecting them and helping them talk to the electric company. It could be helping them apply for food stamps. It could be connecting them with legal aid, that sort of stuff. But then also, we do citizenship classes and English language classes, and we have a goal of serving 75 per year in our citizenship classes that have a special component where we are partnered with Center for Legal Immigration to provide N400 assistance in that capacity. But at the center, we serve around 1,700 people per year, and most of them use this program. So, thank you for funding it, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, I don't see any. And again, thank you for your service to our community.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name's Marcy Metzger, and I'm the Executive Director of Voices of Hope, and Voices of Hope provides services to victims and their families of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, other related forms of assault, and most recently, we've had an increase in human trafficking victims that we're seeing. This last year, we provided more than 1,700 unduplicated adult women, services to adult women, and about 300 unduplicated adult males, and about 400 children that were there while their protective parents were using our services. This particular funding that you provide us, while it's small, has been consistent for more than 30 years, and given the amount of federal and state cuts that we continue to face, it is imperative that this 24-hour services for advocacy is available. Our advocacy responds 24 hours a day to the emergency room. Our advocacy responds 24 hours a day to the emergency rooms, to when law enforcement, whether they be the county sheriff, or the police department, state patrol, UNL Police Department, call and say somebody has been lodged in relationship to domestic violence or sexual assault, our advocates are immediately available to the victims and their families prior to the individual's release from jail. We work very closely in this community with other representatives, I think everybody that does human services overlaps with us in some way. We contract with the Asian Center to make sure that we have, I think it's seven non-English-speaking, culturally-specific advocates that help with our advocates when we have to do emergency safety planning, when we're working with the threat advisory team for the city, when we're involved in any kind of immediate safety access for individuals in the community. So we work really hard to make sure that our services are available 24 hours a day. In the county this year, of those, at least of the adults, those 2,000 adults, about 18% were individuals that we would consider to be rural. We work very closely with the 16 counties surrounding us. We have a little bit of federal dollars that help us with being able to communicate more closely and effectively with our partners in these other 16 counties. So our organization does a lot to try to make sure that services are safe and accessible to everyone who is experiencing this violence in our community. So I just wanted to come and thank you today, and answer any questions that you might have about Voices of Hope.
Any questions?
This is your 30th year, is that correct?
Third, well, Voices of Hope has been in existence as a program for 44 years. I'm saying we've had at least 30 years of funding from JBC.
And again, thank you for your service, not only to our community, but also Region Five. I know that all three of the providers here do a great service for our community, but some providers do provide services to the surrounding counties, so we very much appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the three grant contracts funded by the Joint Budget Committee. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next up are consent items. We have right-of-way contracts with the following: Samuel Kaplan, South 90th Street and Hickman Road, in the amount of $1,675; Deborah Leifert, South 96th Street and Hickman Road, in the amount of $505; Mary S. and David R. Montague, North 27th Street and Agnew Road, in the amount of $1,189. Amendments to the following contracts: County Contract C-150316 with Legal Aid of Nebraska for Legal Services. The amendment extends the term of the contract from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021, and inserts new language regarding how to calculate maximum caseloads for drug court cases. The cost of the county is $56,016 per month. County Contract C-16-0438 with Transit Works for the County Engineers' HPR-TK Network Subscription. The amendment renews the contract for an additional two-year term, beginning August 1st, 2018 through July 31st, 2020. County Contract C-16-41 with Language Link for On-Site Interpreters and TARP III. The amendment is for a price increase of approximately 5%, not to exceed $1,187.50 for the remainder of the contract term. The revised contract total for products and services to the county is not to exceed And County Contract C-17-0831 with Solv Solutions LLC for completion of a gap needs capacity analysis for the Behavioral Health Incrimination Justice System. The contract will be increased $30,000 for the additional service. The revised total cost of the county is not to exceed $100,000. We also have a utility permit, number 1678, allowing Windstream Nebraska to install new fiber optic cable under South 68th Street from Roca Road to Whitstruck Road, from South 64th Street to South 68th Street along Roca Road, and from South 54th Street to South 68th Street along Whitstruck Road. Receiving place on file the following reports for June 2018, the Assessor/Register of Deeds, Clerk of the District Court, County Court, or County Clerk, excuse me, Records and Information Management, and County Engineering.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a matter involving county business but not on the agenda this morning? Seeing none, Ms. P D., would you please continue with the announcements?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, July 10th, 2018, immediately following the Board of Equalization meeting in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will also hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July 12th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July 17th, 2018, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building, with the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting immediately following. The county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is also broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the board meeting. Go ahead and get started with the Board of Equalization meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also with us today is Norm Agonaw, County Assessor. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 19th. Any discussion or corrections? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. This is for Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, Inc.
Rob Ogden, Lancaster County Deputy County Assessor. This is a property that has been missed from the tax rolls, the improvement portion of the building. Since it was constructed, it began construction in 2013 and was completed by 2014. We just recently discovered that it was omitted. We had not received any notice of a permit or anything being done on it, so this is to send notice of valuation change for the years 2018 through 2014. They have 30 days to appeal that value to the Board of Equalization.
So you mentioned that there's no permit. Was there never one filed with the building and safety?
There was one, finally, it appears that we did discover there had been one, but we had never been in receipt of that.
Do we know when that permit was filed?
2013, I believe.
Okay, so they did file a permit?
From best of our knowledge, they did file it with the city-county building and safety, but we were not submitted any notice to us.
So there was a breakdown in communication? Oh, Commissioner Shore.
And going back to 2014, that amount of time is set in statute, how far you can go back?
As far as you, as far as we find it, as long as, if we have not received notice from anybody, as far as the construction of the building, we can go back to the date that it was
Constructed.
Constructed.
Okay.
And so, how much is this going to affect the tax bill?
Well, from 2014 to 2017, the assessed value was 476,900. New assessment is 1,282,900 for 2018. It would go from 826,800 to 1,354,100. So significantly.
Okay, Commissioner Avery.
What's the reason for the jump in assessed value from 17 to 18?
That's, we did a revaluation of the commercial properties from 17 to 18, so we used the, we're consistent with methodology used in the years that we assess it.
Is it your opinion that we can expect an appeal?
We have been unable to contact the property owners, so hopefully, the notice will get where it needs to go. I would assume you'll hear from them.
I think so.
We will probably hear from them first.
Okay, any other questions? Entertainer motion to approve?
I move we, I move we send the notice of assessed valuation change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the sending of a notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes to the Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, Inc. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is a public hearing on motor vehicle tax exemption applications for the following: University of Nebraska Foundation, Trinity United Methodist Church, Villa Marie School, Aponea Horse Rescue, Food Bank of Lincoln, Inc., St. Monica's Home, American Red Cross, Connecting Point Church of the Nazarene, the American Legion, Department of Nebraska, and Indian Hills Community Church.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing for these motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify in support, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity on these applications? Seeing none, going to go ahead and close the motor vehicle tax exemption applications public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item related to the county Board of Equalization business but not on the agenda? Seeing none.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we are adjourned.